Okay, we're ready. Thank you. You can always tell them this meeting's going to start when there's a loud "shhh" in the room. I used to think it was let's call the meeting to order, nothing of the kind. But having said that, let's call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, March 7th. There are 15 council districts. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and for those of you who are gluttons for punishment, we'll be on Channel 35 again tonight and again on Sunday. We're also available by council phone and we are now going to call the roll.
Bernsen, Chick, Fier, Galanter, Hernandez, Hoda, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Swinehurst, Walters, Ferraro, 11 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And the commendatory resolutions are approved, unanimous vote.
On the regular agenda, items 2 through 4 are required public hearing items. Those items can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
All right, say again, we were busy putting cards in the file here.
Items 2 through 4 are building and safety assessment items.
And items 1 and 2 you said should be received and filed?
Actually, items 2, 3, and 4.
But not 1?
Item number 1, there was a council district, one requested that be held on the desk for a question on the item.
Okay, so we'll hold. What else have you got here then? Here, you do 17 and 18, all right. Continuing item 1 to...
March 21st.
March 21st. And items 2, 3, and 4 have been addressed, so we can receive and file, no, receive and file those, right?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, items 2, 3, and 4, anybody object to receiving and filing them? Good, they're received and filed.
The next items on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing items 5 through 10, all have ordinances on them. Do you wish to hold those for 12 members?
Are we expecting a 12th member?
Yes, Madam President, I believe we are. I believe council member Padilla will be present today.
Okay, in that case, let's hold all the ordinances.
Next items on the agenda are also public hearing items 11 through 16, their building and safety confirmation of assessments. Council has cards on 11 and 13.
Hold on, we have cards, 1, 2, and 3. All right, let's hold 11, call that special for the cards. 13, how far did you get here somehow?
Items 11 through 16 with the exception of 11 and 13.
Okay. Members of the, all right, those are the ones where public hearings have not been held, correct?
Required public hearing items.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on any of those? All right. On 11? Yeah, we're holding that one, yes, 11 and 13, we're holding, any of the others? 11 and 13 are being held on the desk while we dispose of the others. Okay, members of the council, any specials? Sorry, I've put down the wonderful chart you gave me and it vanished.
Items 12, 14, and 15 and 16 are the items to be voted on.
So we are, we are ready, do we have any specials by council members? Okay, I don't see any specials, so we're now ready to vote on...
Okay, we're ready. Thank you. You can always tell them this meeting's gonna start when there's a loud "shhh" in the room. I used to think it was, "Let's call the meeting to order," nothing of the kind. But, having said that, let's call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, March 7th. There are fifteen council districts. We are being viewed on Channel 35, and for those of you who are gluttons for punishment, we'll be on Channel 35 again tonight, and again on Sunday. We're also available by council phone, and we are now gonna call the roll.
Bernsen, Schick, Fewer, Galanter, Hernandez, Hoda, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Swineich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, eleven members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, first item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And the commendatory resolutions are approved, unanimous vote.
On the regular agenda, items two through four are required public hearing items. Those items can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
All right, say again, but we were busy putting cards in the file here.
Items two through four are building and safety assessment items.
And items one and two, you said, should be received and filed?
Actually, items two, three, and four.
But not one?
Item number one, there was a Council District One requested that be held on the desk for a question on the item.
Okay, so we'll hold. What else have you got here then? Here, you do seventeen and eighteen, all right. Continuing item one to...
March 21st.
March 21st, and items two, three, and four have been addressed, so we can receive and file, no, receive and file those, right?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, items two, three, and four, anybody object to receiving and filing them? Good, they're received and filed.
The next items on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items five through ten, all have ordinances on them, do you wish to hold those for twelve members?
Are we expecting a twelfth member?
Yes, Madam President, I believe we are, I believe Councilmember Padilla will be present today.
Okay, in that case, let's hold all the ordinances.
Next items on the agenda are also public hearing items eleven through sixteen, they're building and safety confirmation of assessments, council has cards on eleven and thirteen.
Hold on, we have cards, this is one, two, and three, all right, let's hold eleven, call that special for the cards. Thirteen, how far did you get here? Somehow my...
Items eleven through sixteen with the exception, excuse me, with the exception of eleven and thirteen.
Okay. Members of the, all right, those are the ones where public hearings have not been held, correct?
Required public hearing items.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on any of those? All right. On eleven? Yeah, we're holding that one, yes, eleven and thirteen, we're holding, any of the others? Eleven and thirteen are being held on the desk while we dispose of the others, okay, members of the council, any specials? Sorry, I've put down the wonderful chart you gave me and it vanished.
Items twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen are the items to be voted on.
So we are, we are ready, do we have any specials by council members? Okay, I don't see any specials, so we're now ready to vote on five through ten, right? We're holding eleven.
Those are ordinances, five through ten are ordinances. And eleven and thirteen have cards, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Okay, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, next.
Item seventeen is also a public hearing item, it's a public convenience or necessity, and a motion is from the floor is required to grant the application.
All right. Sorry, I'm still trying to keep up with the cards.
Madam President?
Yes.
If we're on item seventeen, we can either call it special, or I would like just to call the council's attention, we have a letter from the police department indicating that they feel the area is saturated, the census tract, this is, I believe, in CD-13, so I think the police department took the extraordinary effort to write this letter and said that they can find no evidence to support a finding of public convenience or necessity, so I would like to recommend that we not grant and not make the findings of public convenience and necessity for this alcoholic beverage license in this neighborhood.
Sorry, we do have one person who wants to be heard on, we are still on seventeen, aren't we? All right. Would you like to hear from, well, he's against the proposal, Mr. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, now, I live actually in the fourth district, well, Mr. Ferraro unfortunately's not here, but I live about two blocks away from the thirteenth district, and we're not represented with the thirteenth either, and this item seventeen has to do with, and I wish to simplify these motions so the general public can read these agenda items, because you gotta be a lawyer to understand what this means, hearing comments relative to the application for determination of public convenience or necessity for alcohol sales for onsite consumption at the day after nightclub at 6757 to 6765 Hollywood Boulevard, and this is basically an application for liquor on Hollywood Boulevard, for a club on Hollywood Boulevard, and I'm against it, I'm against it. There are too many clubs already, there are people driving around drunk, it's a zoo on Hollywood Boulevard, and I don't think that the city council ought to grant a public convenience or necessity certificate, whatever this thing is, I didn't make this simple, I'm against it, okay? I'm against it, I'm against it, I'm against it, let's have, let's have more museums, let's bring back Hollywood Bookstore, that Book City on Hollywood Boulevard, I don't care about liquor licenses, put 'em in, not in my backyard, in NIMBY, not in my backyard.
You and Groucho Marx, remember that song, Whatever It Is, I'm Against It, yes. All right, item seventeen, and a lot of my constituents, okay, item seventeen, open the roll on Ms. Miskowski's motion to deny the... Application, thank you. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is denied.
Next item, Madam President, items which public hearings have been held, items eighteen through twenty, item number eighteen has an ordinance, and again, twelve members are expected.
All right, let's hold item eighteen because that's a very important ordinance, and we want to do it when we have twelve members. All right, members of the council, are there any specials? Twenty-three, Mr. Savornich, anybody else?
And also, Madam President, I understand that item number twenty-five was continued in committee and should also be continued in council, I need a motion for a date.
Okay.
Was it item twenty-eight?
Wait, hold on, let's hear it at twenty-five, I don't, you wanna call that special?
No, item twenty-four was the one in committee.
Oh, not item twenty...
I'm sorry, it's twenty-five.
It is twenty-five, okay, so do we have a date that it's gonna be in committee so we know when to bring it back here?
It's scheduled for our next committee meeting, which was gonna be on the nineteenth of March.
Okay, so let's take, two weeks will be the twenty-first.
Okay, so the twenty-first is fine.
So item twenty-five will be continued to March 21st, and if we need to continue it again, we'll do it then. Okay, that leaves us nineteen, any other specials? Nineteen through twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, then we have a batch more ordinances, so let's go...
Next items are twenty-eight through sixty, twenty-eight through thirty-five are ordes.
All right, let's hold those.
I'd like to move to continue item fifty-four for a week, it affects my district, and we wanna make sure, check the status of the project, and my staff is, who handles it is absent, so I'd like to continue it.
Yeah, we need to make it two weeks though, Joel, because the council will not be moving for several days. So two weeks is the twenty-first.
Madam Chair, did we pass item twenty-seven?
I believe we did, yes.
Could I ask for reconsideration, that's the Skag Regional Transportation Plan?
Oh yeah, no, we do wanna reconsider, yes, thank you. All right, we have to open the roll on reconsideration of item twenty-seven. Let's close the, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote, this is to reconsider. Okay.
Eleven ayes.
All right, it is now reconsidered and called special.
I'll call it special.
Okay. So we go back to, oh, we continued item fifty-four.
We continued fifty-four for...
I have cards, I have a card on thirty-nine. And that's it. So we'll call thirty-nine special, any other specials? Twenty-eight through sixty.
Actually, Madam President, do you wish to...
Actually, thirty-six through sixty, sorry, right? Yeah, thirty-six through sixty, we're holding the ordinances. No specials, here we go, open the roll on thirty-six through thirty-eight and forty through sixty, except for fifty-four. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, those are approved. Fourth with on fifty-five, please. And I guess that takes us back to item eleven, does it not?
Yes, item eleven is the next item.
All right, on item eleven, I have two people who wish to be heard, James Murphy and Melrose Larry Green, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Madam President, the... The nature of my protest is, has been submitted in written form, I have really very little to add to that, other than the fact that whenever I have been actually contacted, I responded immediately, I was not contacted, there was no reason for me not to have cleaned it up and to have hauled it away and would have taken me two days with the pickup truck and some help, which would have been appreciably less than what has assessed me. The other thing that I would like to point out is that, and the last item on my protest... The last item on my protest, on my written protest, is that the house was actually broken into, and everything, literally everything, was cleaned out, even the floors were swept, my refrigerator, my furniture, my stove, everything was taken from the house, without any, any prior notice, without any knowledge of mine, I didn't even know it until quite by accident while I was repairing the roof recently, and I'm sure that you probably have some information on the house, I happened to look in through a top window and see that the kitchen was stripped of everything, then I, I don't have, I can't find the key to the lock on the front door, I then took off one of the boards and went in, my house has been stripped clean, and I've listed everything here that was taken, I assumed that if you were going, someone was going to go into my house and take my personal belongings when it was in fact boarded and locked, that I would have been notified of that, and there was no notice.
Mr. Murphy, I actually have somebody, the reason I was talking to my assistant here is to make sure that we are in contact with the council district office for thirteen, so we can, no, it's not thirteen?
I pressed my button because it's actually in my council district.
Yes, I believe it is.
It's on the agenda, and I was gonna ask the Department of Building and Safety to have staff come to the table and explain the situation here.
All right, we do also have one other person who wants to be heard, so...
Oh, excuse me, okay, well, defer that until the...
Mr. Murphy, why don't you stick around, but let me hear from the other person, and then we'll hear from the staff.
By the way, thank you for the reference to Groucho, he was a personal favorite.
It's a great song, too, Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody, I'm talking about item number eleven, again, I wanna, I wanna reiterate, these wording for this, I know you have a lot of clerks that make up these agendas, you could simplify the wording on these motions, I'll use my Brandeis and Cornell education to explain to all the laymen looking at the agenda what these motions are all about, these are all assessments from the city of LA, basically to building owners who should have to pay out of their own pocket because there's graffiti, or because there's damage to the property, or because there's, there's cleaning to be done, these are assessments against property owners, and I'm against all of them, and I'll tell you why, they didn't spray the graffiti on their buildings, they didn't, in most cases, the property owners are not the reason that the, that the property is deteriorating and falling apart, my, the reason why I don't think they ought to be assessed is because it shouldn't come out of their pocket, we're not gonna have property owners anymore in the city of LA if we're assessing everybody left and right for graffiti, and cleaning and fencing lots, I would rather see more police on the streets, get some of the police out of Parker Center, get about three thousand cops out of Parker Center, give 'em uniforms, have 'em walk around the areas where these properties are, and you'll have a lot less assessments and a lot more property owners in the city of LA, I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, that closes the hearing on this item, and Mr. Fewer, you wanted the Department of Building and Safety?
Yes, please.
Have we got somebody here from the Department of Building and Safety?
I believe we do.
Step this way.
What I'd like, Madam President, what I'd like the department to address itself to is very clear, Mr. Murphy has indicated that he feels the assessment is unfair, that there was insufficient effort by Building and Safety to communicate with him, and that the actions that were taken were unduly broad, I know that your office has been working on this for a while, could you please respond to those concerns?
Sure, in August of ninety-seven, we issued an order to Mr. Murphy, and it was mailed, certified mail and regular mail, the certified mail was unclaimed, the regular mail never came back, and four months later, Mr. Murphy still had not cleaned the property, and we were receiving complaints from your office, Councilman Fewer, on a regular basis, so it was the department's obligation to secure the property, clean it as best we could, and that's exactly what we did, we cleaned it, the barricades would come next after it was cleaned, and it would be fenced, and the owner of the property responded before we barricaded, therefore, we had already cleaned the property, and that's what this assessment is for.
Were any steps not taken in this instance to apprise the property owner that would have been taken or have been taken in other cases?
We attempted to contact him, we had no direct telephone number for him, we did contact a couple of people that we knew were on his electrical bill, other than that, we couldn't, we couldn't find him anywhere.
Did you wanna add something?
No.
All right, well, you know, I, I have to say that I think that the property owner, there were appropriate efforts made to communicate with the property owner in this case, and that the action taken was no different from an action that Building and Safety would have taken and has taken in other similar instances around the city, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, Madam President, on, on this item, which is to hear the appeal from the assessment, I would recommend that the council reject the appeal and affirm the assessment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, this is nothing that we do with glee, it ends up being quite necessary because property owners do have a responsibility to maintain their property, even if in fact they are not fully aware of who may have tagged or blemished the property, the fact of the matter is, it has an effect on the entirety of the neighborhood in which the property exists, no matter who that owner may or may not be, I speak more, more specifically to the concerns made by public comment by one said Melrose Larry Green, who offers pedigree, and as a part of this action, Madam President, I suggest that we do a degree check to verify the veracity of these claims, but the point that I wish to make is that blight in a particular instant does infect, affect, and perhaps infect, the entirety of the environment, we had a recent example of it where a property owner becoming fully exacerbated with the circumstances, chose to bring attention to his situation by placing graffiti on the property himself, as if that were to be, and did it in the full light of day on one local media outlet so it could be documented, and I'm hardly suggesting that such is the case in this instance, I do wish to say, however, that property owners are in fact obliged to be proactive at the point of taking care of property so that neighborhoods can thrive and not be blighted owing to anything close to a broken window theory.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Fewer has moved to deny the appeal.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we take the vote, I don't wish to unduly extend this, I see Mr. Murphy wants to very briefly state a response, I would ask him to view it if you give him an opportunity, please.
That would be fine, please do, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. First of all... Is that all right to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, there's, there's always a lot of background noise up here, just ignore it.
First of all, in every instance that I have actually been contacted, I have responded almost within the next day, the original notice that the Department of Building and Safety spoke about, I did not receive, I don't question that they sent it, I did not receive it, you have several other instances where a certified letter was sent to me, and even this notice itself was posted on my gate, I did not receive it, had I not have been there working at the time the inspector posted it, I may not have seen it, there was never graffiti, what I was later informed was that they painted, I boarded the property myself, they painted the new, fresh plywood to match the house, there was no graffiti ever.
Madam President, here's my request at this juncture, I'm gonna ask that, I have no reason to change my recommendation, but I'd like to ask that we hold this on the desk, I'm gonna have Building and Safety and Mr. Murphy confer, by the time this meeting concludes, the matter will come back for a vote, if there's a reason to alter the recommendation, we'll present it at that point, in the next fifteen minutes, I'd ask the two teams here to confer with my staff.
Thank you.
I think that sounds very wise, Mr. Hernandez, did you wanna say something before we... Okay, all right, thank you, I hope this resolves itself. Now, Mr. Fewer, you had a presentation, and I apologize, I meant to call you a couple of items ago.
Madam Chair, I had asked that we defer item fifty-four on the emergency storm drainage, in talking with staff, I've agreed to allow for item fifty-four to move on because we do have an emergency and trying to deal with some of those storm drains, but we wanted to remove the $65,000 funding that they had identified from the Wiltshire Bowdrey Project, Stormwater Project, and so they're in agreement to allow the rest of it to move, and that money they will hold for continuance, so I'd like to basically just hold the second therefore on that motion.
I think Mr. Wax had asked that that be continued, so we need to go sort that out.
So he wanted to continue it also?
Yeah, and I don't know if it was for the same reason or not, so we have... Maybe, maybe, let's hold that one on the desk, let Mike do his presentation, and we'll try to resolve that as well, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President.
At last.
Colleagues, for those of you who especially watch the Today Show, you, all of America really, has both suffered with, expressed empathy with, and been educated by Katie Couric, whose husband died of colorectal cancer, my grandmother had colon cancer, and I'm standing with Lisa Dubow, who is here to receive a presentation in recognition of Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, she herself being a survivor of a disease...
a survivor of a disease that is eminently survivable if it's detected early enough. The purpose of this presentation this morning is to help contribute to public awareness of the fact that this disease can be spotted early, and if it's detected early enough, it can prevent somebody's dad from dying, somebody's spouse from passing away, somebody's grandmother from dying prematurely. March 2001, March marks the continuance of this effort, a national effort to raise public awareness of colorectal cancer. It also marks the beginning of the state effort with a proclamation designating March 2001 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the state of California. There are, according to American Cancer Society estimates, as many as 130,000 men and women who will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer every year, and 56,000 will die of the disease because it wasn't detected early enough, because it's a disease that people don't wish to talk about, because people don't wish to take advantage of the tests, and therefore, because people are squeamish about the issue, people die. And we can do better than that. Doctors recommend regular screening for the disease, and the reason for that is quite simple. There are many symptoms that might lead one to suspect that one has colorectal cancer, but frankly, in most cases, there are no symptoms at all. I think that was the case with Katie Couric's husband. No symptoms at all. The U.S. Senate has declared March as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, so we're part of a national effort to raise consciousness so that people will survive. And it's with that in mind that I'm honored to participate with those who are designating this time to focus awareness on a survivable disease, and I'm honored to present to Ms. Lisa Dubow, who is the spokesperson for the Colon Cancer Alliance, and, as I mentioned, a survivor of the disease. This resolution, signed by all of us here on the City Council, and I want to give you a chance to speak to further highlight the importance of what we're doing this morning.
I want to thank Mike Fuhrer for bringing this to the city of Los Angeles, and I know that, as I look around this room, there are many people here who are 50 or older, and if anybody tonight goes home and makes that phone call to their doctor and says, "Somebody was talking about this disease today, and it's a disease that you cannot feel, and many people aren't talking about it because it's too late and they're dead." So if anybody here makes that phone call today, then both of us have been here for a good reason. My mother still has her daughter, and I'm still my son's mother. So thank all of you for this.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Next item, I believe, is item 13. We are very likely not going to have 12 members here today, but we're going to hang on for a little while longer and see if there's any possibility. Okay, item 13, we have two people who want to be heard, Janice and Rip Riley. Go ahead.
I am not a public...
You need to get the microphone very close. Pull it down so you're comfortable.
Well, I'm not a public speaker.
Doesn't matter. You have to do it anyway.
I do not want to be here. But this is all confusing. I did have a lot, my home beside my house and behind, that needed to be cleaned, and I was cleaning it, but I didn't realize I had 15 days, and so I was given a... I don't know, it was how many years ago? Four years ago? Five? Yeah. But they did clean it, but they never gave me a bill. And finally, about a year later, they sent a $3,000 bill, and so I asked, "What is it for?" You know, you want to know what you're paying for. So my husband went to Nate Holden's office to see if he could get help, because we don't have $3,000 anywhere to pay out, you know, $3,000. So we didn't get any answer from anywhere until I called. Six months later, they sent the same bill with no itemization, no answers to me about what happened. So I have been saving 200 or 300 a month for paying this bill. I have now about $1,200, but I don't have the 3,000. I don't... The only thing I got was when they called, they sent me a letter to come to the hearing. Then they did send with that a paper that said, "For the cleaning, it was 2,100." They broke it down. Wait a minute, I have to find this paper. This was a couple weeks ago. I didn't even know anything about this, but it says, it says the cost was $2,152, and then it said, "40 percent or a minimum of $100 to such costs for a total of 3,1342 to be set against property." I still don't know what I'm paying for, and my husband, you have something to say, Rip, about it.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I can't understand is what the two old gentlemen with the old truck haul away a little bit of rubbish. I could have Beacon's Trail and go to New York for $3,000. I'd like to know, why is this happening, and for what reason? It's because the real estate people want to try to meet us, sell out of our house, and they reported these things unfairly, and it seemed like they had support of this council, because there are many houses where people store things in their backyard, but why us on that one street?
That's the other thing. Just five houses down the street, there's a woman who has the same problem, okay? And she has never been contacted, never harassed. I've been harassed for 10 years, you know? I know I have a problem. I know I'm working on it. But that's me. That's the way I was born, you know? I'm born a diabetic, I'm born a pack rat, but I've got to be able to pay for these things. You know, they unilaterally, I mean, unilaterally decide how much they're going to charge. They don't let you know. You don't have any voice in it. Your rights or any thoughts have been taken away from you. I feel like I've been ripped off or raped, you know what I mean? I have no time, no chance to talk to anybody about this. I'm living for them, but what am I exactly supposed to do?
Let me see if I can find that out for you. Mr. Holden, this is in your district.
Madam President, members, they do have a compelling story which generates a lot of empathy for this couple. I think we ought to hear their story in total, maybe in my office, and then look for a way to perhaps make some adjustments here.
All right. So would you like, then, to continue the item?
I would like to continue this for a week.
Well, it'll be two weeks, because we're not meeting next week.
Two weeks.
Okay. So we're going to continue this item to March 21st, and in the meantime, if you would meet with Mr. Holden and his staff, we'll see if we can work something out.
Thank you very much, and I would just like the council to realize that...
That's enough.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
I think you should quit while you're ahead here. All right. This is the card from that hearing. Since we are not going to have 12 members, it is now official. How about we go back to items 5 through 10?
18 and 28 through 25, excuse me, 28 through 35. Number 18 has a card on it. Do you wish to...
Yeah, but there was a long hearing, or not a long hearing, there was a hearing already held on that, in the Planning and Land Use Committee. So we have 5 through 10, and what else are we up to here?
18 and 28 through 35.
Okay. Do we have, members of the council, do we have any specials on any of those items? 5 through 10, 18, and 28 through 35. Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Now, because we do not have 12 members present, all of those ordinances carry over until at least a week, and we won't, the council will not be in session a week from today, so they will go to the 16th, which is Friday, a week from Friday. Okay. Which brings us back to item...
Item 23.
Called special by Mr. Savornich. Would you hit the speaker button, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Do we have police department staff that is here that could answer some questions on item number 23 in regards to the recruitment? Madam President, if they are here, if you could hold my time until...
I haven't even started your time, because you didn't hit your speaker button.
Even better.
Nice try.
There we go.
Commander.
Good morning. Commander Betty Kellipas, commanding officer of Personnel Group, Los Angeles Police Department.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Commander. One of the questions that I do have is that the report before us asks to transfer approximately $1.5 million, $1 million from the appropriated balance for police recruitment advertising, and another half a million dollars for police recruitment relocation. And the question that I have is that we are constantly receiving information in bits and pieces in regards to our attrition rate in the LAPD and our not being able to meet hiring goals because of certain factors that have a lot to do with everything and a lot to do with nothing. But the question I do have is, I'd like to know where we are in regards to our current recruiting, how the department believes this $1 million will improve our recruitment, where we are recruiting from. Are they laterals? Are we recruiting across the state? Are we recruiting across the country? And where are we advertising? By what means of advertising are we trying to outreach to individuals? And get a little bit more of a sense of where we're going to be spending the $1 million, the half a million dollars and the half a million dollars for recruitment relocation. So if we could just hear a little bit about that.
I'd be happy to do that, Councilman. Let me start out where we are now in recruitment, and then we'll go into a little more depth of how we intend to spend the money and how we've done in the past. First off, the Los Angeles Police Department has recruited and has hired for this fiscal year 272 police officers that have started the academy. Our attrition rate for this year has been 409. That doesn't meet our current hiring goals. Obviously, we had anticipated approximately 600 people leaving the department. We're certainly on schedule with that, and maybe probably a little less because fewer people have left in January than we had expected. Our classes have not been the size that we had wanted at the beginning of the fiscal year, which we had been hoping to hire 45 persons per class for each month, and we have been only hiring 45 persons about every other month. Last calendar year, and I'm going to speak calendar year because that's where my numbers are coming from my head right now, we had, we recruited over 14,000 individuals to take the written exam. In the previous years, we had only recruited about 6,353. Now, the reason the numbers were up for last year versus the previous year is that the 6,353 were local testing only, and last year, we did an out-of-state recruiting campaign where over 9,000 were recruited from out of the state. This year, we've had, for the first two months of this calendar year, about 1,000 individuals take the written exam, and that includes, most recently, last month, our Black History Month at Crenshaw Christian Center, where we tested 112, 125 African Americans. Consequently, we still need to improve our numbers in order to get sufficient numbers, which, when we calculate out the numbers, we need approximately 12 to 15 candidates to come in the front door of the police exam process to give us one candidate into the academy. Consequently, in order to hire the 1,029 we are down in the organization, we need to bring in over 12,000 to 15,000 individuals in the front door. As of this year, we are having difficulty meeting that, and part of it is because we have suspended our out-of-state recruiting efforts as of October of last year due to the belief that that was not being successful. However, we believe to a certain extent, we are showing some results from that out-of-state testing, because our last class had about 15, or half of the class was out-of-state candidates. We're actually starting to show some results from that. In our recruitment efforts, both out-of-state and locally, as you may remember, last July 17th, we launched a local recruiting effort that was a media effort, just the television, cable, and radio. That cost about $500,000 for one month's worth of advertising. We did see a local bump in our recruitment efforts. We recruited about 150 more local candidates as a result of that effort. However, most of our candidates have still been coming from out of state. This money we're requesting this year is 1 million for a, I mean, the rest of this fiscal year is 1 million to do a more strategic and wide-ranging process to include not only TV, cable, and radio, but also bus kiosks, internet advertising, as well as bus wraparounds, additional radio, and print advertising that we had not been doing as much. This would also include something we know that we desperately need is a billboard advertising campaign, which we haven't had in the past. I would be happy to go through how much each one of those different areas, I also have, for which we're requesting money, I also have Ms. Phyllis Lines, I don't have her here, you have her here, from the Personnel Department of the Public Safety Employment Division, who we work with for our media and advertising campaign, who has specific information as far as how much we've done in the past as far as media and advertising and what we're looking for.
The question that I do have, a follow-up question, is that on item number, item number two of the Budget and Finance Committee report, requests a half a million dollars to a new account in the unappropriated balance for police recruitment relocation. Could you explain that to us?
I'd be happy to. Over about a year and a half ago, we moved, when we increased the size of our recruitment unit from six recruiting officers to approximately 20 recruiting officers, they had been housed over in the Personnel Department building in a small area, and they outgrew that area. So in order to facilitate them having a large enough space, we moved them to a currently leased space in a building in the Hollywood area, and at 6464 Sunset Boulevard, where they had sufficient space to do their recruiting. However, we also realized that as a result of that, our ability to coordinate efforts with the Personnel Department had diminished because they were so far from not only the Personnel Department, but from us as a management team in the downtown Parker Center area. In order to coordinate our efforts better with the Personnel Department, our background investigators, et cetera, we need to move them back in to the Personnel Department building, and this money is to build out a space so that they would have sufficient room there, that is, larger room than what they had before.
The final series of questions that I have on my remaining time is that, as we see the numbers of recruits and classes drop to approximately half, how many individuals are walking in the front door now as compared to the 15,000, 14,000 to 15,000 that we would need in order to have the classes full?
If we go by calendar year, and that's what I'm comparing, the 14,000 we had last calendar year, this calendar year, we have about 2,000. If you calculate that out, 500 per month for the next fiscal year for our local recruiting campaign, that would give us about 6,000 candidates, and that's an insufficient number to meet our goals.
We're about 8,000 to 9,000 front-door walk-ins where we would like to be?
We would need another 8,000 or 9,000, yes, Councilman.
Right. Okay. So the question that I have is, $1 million is enough to get our numbers to where we need to have the police department adequately staffed, so those of us who represent 18 police divisions across the city of Los Angeles don't continue to see a blue hemorrhage in regards to patrol and other important functions in our districts? Is $1 million going to be able to get you where you think we need to be in regards to get those front-door walk-in candidates in order to get these numbers where we can get people on the force?
Truthfully, Councilman, I am not certain. We know that when we did spend that $500,000, we got more candidates. We are certainly hoping that using this million dollars in the next few months to do a strategic advertising campaign is going to give us a larger number. We're hoping for a sufficient number. We can't tell until we've done it, and we're hoping by that time...
Nobody wants to be an LAPD officer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commander Calipaz, I'm just wondering if, as part of the program, there's been any revisiting movie theater chains and asking if we can show the kinds of ads that I know are very expensive to put on television, but quite some years ago, in our efforts to recruit, I had made contact with some of those theater chains, and as a result, without charge to the city, they agreed, several of them, to run the LAPD recruiting ads before starting the movies. And I think it was a fairly, I don't know that there was tracking done, which I think really should be done on all of these efforts to show us where we're getting bang for the buck, but that was pro bono, that was free, no cost. I keep raising this subject in committees where recruiting comes up, and I've not heard a response that's satisfactory to me, anyway, in terms of pursuing something that was cost-free and reached a very diverse, i.e., the movie audience in Los Angeles, local potential recruits.
We do know that there had been some movie theaters that were allowing us pro bono advertising. Magic Johnson Theater was one of them. We ultimately ended up purchasing at Magic Johnson Theaters because they were so helpful to us at a later time. As part of this effort, there is a part of it to request buying time at theaters. However, there hasn't been an outpouring of goodwill to offer that to us recently. I know we've made contact, but I don't think it's been successful. Phyllis, do you have any further information about that?
We did make contact, or attempted to, I believe, when you first brought it up, Councilwoman, over a year ago, and ran into some walls. So any help that you can provide, it would be appreciated.
So the answer was no?
Yes, the contact we had, the answer was no.
Because when we did this some years back, it wasn't just at one single theater. It was at chains of theaters, and it was being run in multiple theaters around the city. And maybe it's not, I don't know, you know, if things have changed financially. I know some of the theaters are having problems, yeah. However, the owners of those theater chains understand the importance of having an adequate quality police force in the city and what that means to their bottom line. And so I think it's worth revisiting, and perhaps we can talk about it afterwards and find the right government affairs personnel in those chains to approach and see if we can make it a win-win.
Right, because that has always been a good source. The audience is a good source.
Mr. Fuhr.
Madam President?
Yes.
I actually would be happy to refer to the chair of the Public Safety Committee first.
Okay, because she's up next, Ms. Muzikowsky.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. And I really appreciate the questions that Ms. Chick asked because they were the same ones we asked in committee. And the difference may be, as Ms. Chick pointed out, and as I mentioned in committee, that it's all well and good to have our personnel and our police office of recruitment make these connections, but there may be, by coming to the council members and asking the council members to make some of these connections, particularly in the movie theater chains or any other media arenas, where we may have contacts and relationships there that we can say, this is really important, and get a very open door very quickly as opposed to going up whoever, whatever happens in any institution. So that is a point that I would like to at least also encourage, but it is a part of this, and it's particularly focused in some of the theater areas where we might have some of the best results. There's no question that this has been stop-start as we have in the past, but we have, this million-dollar request for the remainder of this year, it's got to come up as a very serious discussion in our budget for next year, and we need to look at the end and the results of this quarter with this effort because I think we really have not done enough and not done enough consistently. We can't just start it and then let it drop. We've got to be constant. Members of the council, for those who are concerned about the overview, this is the same unit that we have had and asked that there be created, and the reason they've got some increased numbers is because in the past, we might have gotten a recruit in that front door, and then they were lost, forgotten, dropped, not encouraged, not like when you go to college and you get a recruiter there who talks to you, who talks to your family, who stays in touch. Or as Mr. Savornich was just pointing out, in the military, you get that same kind of visit in the family by the military recruiters to talk about the opportunities, to talk about this as a career. We need, and that's why we have, more people now. Members of the council, we can also look at years past when we would have these two agencies here, the Department of Personnel and the Police Department, not always in agreement, working sometimes at odds, working contrary to each other. That has changed. So we've now got this together as a unit, and I think it's very important to have the incremental part of this, to have the two units together, working constructively. It's a long road, a big hill that we have to get up in terms of getting the recruitments in, but I think we are starting to work in the right direction. And let me just remind the council that we are also working at the other end, and that is the retention end. And the matter on the ballots, both in May and in June, are working in that regard, as well as some other issues that we are doing overall, in the general issue of police morale that is going to make this, once again, a very viable place and institution for people to want to join, but we, on this side of Parker Center, have to do our job about providing money, providing continuity, providing oversight, to let the people who can recruit have the funds and the wherewithal to recruit well and to continue to monitor it. So I appreciate the conversation and the focus that is being given this today, and hope we can have a unanimous vote today and then visit it again as we look at next year's budget to continue more of the same.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, this does arise from Budget and Finance. I urge support for the report. A little context, as was said in response to other questions, our problem is not attrition, our problem is recruitment. And our recruitment situation is really at a crisis stage. We will be about 1,000 officers down from where we were just a couple of years ago by the end of the year because of our shortfall in new hiring. And while it's true, from everything we've been able to gather, that this is not limited to Los Angeles, that this is a national problem for every major city, governing Los Angeles, we have to come to grips with this. And there's another aspect to this that we've been discussing in committee, and that is, even as we recruit people to come to take the test, to start the process of becoming police officers, as we apply the polygraph test to them, a small percentage of applicants who we think would otherwise be fit based on their preliminary exams actually pass. I think it's true that about 17 of 60 or so have passed. It's, Nate, hold on a second. In terms of, in terms of, I'll say that again, of the 60 people for whom polygraphs were supposed to apply, as we've begun that process this calendar year, only 17 will move forward through the academy. And that's with a diminished number of people seeking to become police officers in the first place. We're looking at a huge shortfall in our officers. The reason that we approved this allocation of funds for the public relations effort is that we're all struggling to come to grips with what it will take to attract people to our department in the first place. I've asked the department to look at another kind of incentive, which is really just a piece of a broader puzzle, and that is look at forgiving tuition loans. So we can't have an applicant pool of police recruits who may have gone through college but might be choosing other kinds of careers, you know, for law and for medicine and for teaching. There are ways to forgive your student loans, but not for being a police officer. And I think a report is coming back imminently, is it not on that possibility?
Yes, sir.
So I'm really speaking, at this point, to both raise the visibility of it is a real emergency and to inspire among all of us a sense that we have to participate in creatively shaping a recruiting approach that will result in better hiring. 1,000 fewer officers than we had three years ago, 17 of 60 passing the polygraph. The next council is going to inherit a big problem unless we stem the tide of this issue now.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. In committee, I raised some questions that Ms. Calipaz apparently did not respond to. She was not at the meeting, or if she was, she wasn't at the table. One of the questions that I raised had to do with billboards, and you said here today, we desperately need a billboard campaign. Why do we desperately need a billboard campaign? How many recruits do you anticipate getting per dollar that you spend on that billboard campaign? Billboards historically are known to be very difficult to monitor, at least in the political world. They don't buy you much. Pardon? Well, if they're free, like, some people are fortunate enough to get them, then that's another story. But I also talked about looking for pro bono opportunities, and I didn't hear that in your presentation. I don't see that here. The ads in the movie theaters. Movie theaters ran ads free for the Department of Recreation and Parks. If they're going to run them free for recreation and parks, they'll certainly run them free for the police department. It seems to me that there's not enough emphasis here on the exploration of free advertising in any of the media. Radio does, and television do, public service announcements. Often, they're in the middle of the night, but you could explore the possibility of getting them at prime times, as well as in the middle of the night. And I don't, I'm very disappointed to see that the report comes and that you come as if the committee never happened, as if the discussion in committee never happened. The dollars expended on the recruitment trips that you advocated out of the city versus, in ratio to the number of recruits that we actually got from that, not only the number of recruits, the persons hired as a result of those trips, was a disaster. It's just an absolute disaster in terms of the dollars expended. So I think that we need to have very carefully targeted recruitment and recruitment that has shown some pattern over time of yielding new hirees, new hires. I'm glad that. I'm really pleased that the out-of-town recruitment has been dropped, and I would hope that we would just not approach this with a superficial brush and say, oh, yes, we're going to do billboards, we're going to do this, that, and the other, without any knowledge of the actual new hires that you expect to get. There've got to be some goals, there's got to be some monitoring. There's nothing built in for evaluation here, and it should be evaluated segment by segment of the advertising that you do.
Ms. Walters, your time's up.
Thank you.
Mr. Savornich.
Colleagues, what I hear today is a good effort by the LAPD trying to get its numbers up, but I think what we have to face is that, right now, at this point in the history of the city of Los Angeles, people don't want to be Los Angeles police officers. They don't want to do it. And no matter how much money we continue to want to invest in the system, until individuals who may have wanted to consider law enforcement are comfortable with joining, there's nothing that the department is going to be able to do to drag these people in their front door. And so one of the things to which I think we seriously need to consider, and I'm sure the department recruiting team has already been doing this, is to possibly embrace some of the recruitment tactics that we see that the military may want, the military employs. I don't know whether or not we recruit on high school or college campuses. I don't know if we do or not. But I think there's a perception out there that if you had to do something with your life, would you want to join the Los Angeles Police Department in 2001? And the answer is probably no. I think that's being spelt out for us very clearly in the amount of people who are walking in the front door, even though I'd like to commend the department and the Personnel Department for the yeoman's effort in trying to get the numbers up. The question that I do have is that are there, and I'm sure that we are trying to make sure that the department is as reflective of the city of Los Angeles's demographics as possible. Are there certain hiring goals in regards to male or female officers, or Caucasian, Latino, African-American, Asian, Pacific Islander populations, which we are falling short in regards to possibly looking at some type of wedge recruitment tactics that we can employ to get those numbers up? And I'd like to hear a little bit about that also.
You're, Councilman, you're speaking basically about our Blake Justice consent decree that was put in place in 1980.
Yes.
As of this year, our numbers, and the consent decree requires that we hire African-Americans at the rate of 15 percent, our goal. Our goal is Latinos 30 percent, or Hispanics 30 percent, females 20 percent, which, as you know, was raised in 1994 by the council to 43.4 percent. And our Asian-American goals were set by the Police Commission in 1996 to be 10 percent. Where we are in our department's representation at this point is 13.7 percent African-American, 33.3 percent Latino, 6.8 percent Asian-Pacific Islanders, and 18.6 percent women. Consequently, where we are falling short is in our African-American population. One of the, and our females, though we are reaching that goal of 20 percent that was required by the consent decree, but certainly not the goal of 43.4 percent that was required by the city council back in 1994. Because of our concern, particularly about our African-American recruitment efforts, it was one of the reasons why we have done out-of-state and out-of-area testing. The populations in the LA statistical metropolitan area for African-Americans show that there's only 8.9 percent of the population in the area is African-American. And when we have traveled out of state to other urban locations, we have been able to recruit as many as 20 to 25 percent African-Americans. That is consistent with what we have done in the past five years in order to recruit sufficient numbers for our goals to be met. The other area, of course, is our women, and those, actually, we're seeing more of our women coming from the Los Angeles area, and our efforts are working more in the Los Angeles area, so we're concentrating most of our women events in the Los Angeles area. I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
Yeah, and as a follow-up
I hope so, too, because your time's up.
I took his time.
Not according to my timer.
Well, I held it for a long time here.
Okay.
Yeah, but I've got three more people who want to be heard. You can always push the button again, we can go around a third time. Esther Hernandez.
Members of the council, I don't know what's worse, the fact that we can't find Angelenos to be police officers, or the fact that we can't have Angelenos qualify to be police officers. I say that because in an ideal world, and if the city of Los Angeles was its own world, we'd be looking at the city of Los Angeles to deal with its needs. I think the question of the demographics, the real solution is to reach what we call parity, where the police department is a reflection of the community it represents. And when we talk about how we spend our advertisement and recruitment dollars, I think there should be a clear focus that these are Los Angeles taxpayer dollars, and they should be spent to recruit people from Los Angeles to be police officers. A lot of the issues we've been dealing with as a police department have dealt with, I think, the lack of this relationship between the local community and the police department. And when we talk about fighting crime in our neighborhoods, let's not forget that it's in our neighborhoods. And so the efforts have to create a focus on why it is that we cannot recruit Angelenos to become police officers. I mean, there has to be a clear understanding as to what's going on there. Is it because we're not putting enough of an emphasis in our junior colleges? Is it because the student population in junior colleges just don't qualify? Is it because we're not putting enough emphasis in our four-year colleges? Is it because maybe we're not working closer at the high school Is it because maybe we're not working closer at the high school level in getting people ready for, to want to be? And I'm asking these kinds of questions because as we're nodding our heads, let's understand the statement, "We have more success recruiting African-Americans outside of the region," and it's because of demographics. And maybe the parity issue has to be readdressed. I know that the student population of the city of Los Angeles, right now, is like 63 percent Latino. I mean, those are demographic changes going on in this area. And to say that 33 percent has gotten over the goal is an old gold. The demographics are changing for the future of the city, the same thing with the Asian population, and the same thing for the African-American population. I think the goal has got to be how it is that we get Angelenos to be ready to be part of our society, and how it is that they can become police officers, because that's a part of our society, so that we can work hand-in-hand with each other. And that's really talking from the perspective of the ideal world. And so when we're talking about advertising and we're talking about recruitment efforts, I'd really like to see Angelenos' tax dollars be spent in trying to recruit Angelenos to our police department, and further analysis as to how we can make that happen.
Mr. Holden.
Well, I think we should try and recruit at home first to meet your goals. And if it turns out that the goals are not met and you still need police officers, we have to expand the area which we can recruit, or should recruit, in order to meet the consent decree, number one. Number two, I disagree that a lot of men and women don't want to be part of L.A. Police Department. I don't agree with that at all. In fact, we don't talk about it, but it is a fact that a lot of police officers who leave, recruited from LAPD, and they think they're going to have a good deal where they go in these small communities, change their mind, and they try to come back to LAPD. And we need to talk about that, because it is the best department. It's a big department, there's room for growth, and it's just tremendous opportunity within the department. But they don't know about it until it's too late, it's after the fact. But you need to list them, you need to, if not by name, but by number, of them who left and say, "Now I can't I come back." And that'll serve as a warning notice to the ones who are being recruited to leave. The grass is not greener on the other side of the street. So I really take issue with that. Also, I take issue with the bad press. Anybody who can bite at the police department, they'll do it. Try living without them and see what happens. I think that life would be unbearable, would be terrorized almost in every community if we did not have the police department. And I would say there are some problems that Los Angeles Police Department is realizing, has realized, especially with Rampart. But all of the officers, not bad officers, there are some, we need to get them out of the department, because to give the department a bad name is like one rotten apple can spoil the barrel, at least in appearance. But I must tell you that there are times that each of us have needed to have a police officer at our side, at our backs, in front of us, protecting our community and our constituency. And they've been there. I mean, they put it on the line every day. How often do we go to a funeral, even though elected officials who attack the police department sometime, they go to the funeral and they cry, and the tears are in their eyes, because this mother, or the father, or the uncle, or whatever, gave their life so that we may live in a free society. So I must tell you that a lot of these guys want to be LAPD officers. Some of them, they became, they got in trouble as kids, or they had a little marijuana, whatever. They don't qualify. Whatever they call that stuff, they call it something else now.
Overtime, I think we call it.
They had a little overtime.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. A statement that Commander Calipas just made astounds me. When you said that the recruitment efforts outside Los Angeles were based on the need to beef up your numbers with respect to women and minorities, I was just astounded, because I recall very vividly pressing you in committee, overtime, about the disastrous numbers that we're getting back, and about the places where you were going, being remarkably free of Latinos and African-American candidates. And I recall, again, very vividly, your response to me was that we go where we can get good people. We want good people who are to be police officers. You're not looking at the race. And that was flying in the face of the very report that we were dealing with from the police department that said getting a police force that looked like the city was important, in effect, that they were interested in diversity. And your comment was just the opposite. And now you come today and say that, while our recruitment efforts for outside Los Angeles were based on our concern about African-Americans. You can't have it both ways. Is diversity an underpinning of what you're trying to do, or are you still trying to get just anybody who wants to be a police officer?
Councilmember Walters. We recruit outside the Los Angeles area and out-of-state in order to identify quality candidates. We also know that in large urban populations, there are large diverse numbers and diverse ethnicities and genders that we can recruit from. Our numbers did, however, show that we were getting diverse populations recruited and taking the written exam in those locations.
Commander Calipas, I remember standing right here in council this time, not just in committee, and talking to you about this. You went to Washington, D.C., a heavily African-American city, predominantly African-American city, and you didn't go anywhere near the African-American community. You recruited on the campus of American University, which is the most removed college campus from the African-American community in D.C. You didn't go to Howard, which has one of the, is one of the major and extremely outstanding African-American universities there in Washington. You didn't go there to recruit. You didn't even recruit in town, or somewhere near the middle points of the city. People would have difficulty getting out to American University. And it was that pattern that you utilized. Another place you were recruiting in Colorado, Colorado Springs, a known hotbed of right-wing activity. You weren't going to find any African-American recruits in Colorado Springs. And I went over these data with you when I had it all in front of me, and more than one time.
Ms. Walters.
So I really have a problem with your focus on it. One day you say one thing, and another day you say something else.
We still have two more people who've, no, hold on. We still have two more people who've pressed their buttons. And members of the council, I want to remind you, we still have several agenda items. And we have one person excused to leave at 11:30, which will leave us with a bare quorum. So to the extent that we can get on with it, maybe we could do that. Mr. Fewer, you're up next.
Having taken the cue, I move the question.
All right. And you've already spoken. The only person left on here has already spoken twice. Open the roll on previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
All right, that's approved. The matter is now before us. And the matter that's before us is as described on the agenda, which is basically the budget for this stuff. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved.
Fourth with.
Fourth with on that. Yes, sir.
Madam President, I think it would be appropriate, however, if we could get a report back from the police department, how their efforts are going in regards to the monies that we just appropriated as they begin to expend them on how recruitment happens.
I think that would be an excellent suggestion, but it ought to go through the Public Safety Committee.
Of course.
And Councilmember, that has been requested by Budget and Finance and Public Safety.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Next item.
I'd like to have a report within 115 days.
Yes, Mr. Savornich would appreciate the report within, is it 115?
Yeah, please.
I thought it was slightly over that, but I'm always glad to hear it.
Madam Chair, on item 54, I think Councilmember Wax, should my questions have been answered?
Right.
We could allow that to proceed.
For, yes, just for the record, I've been assured by the staff that enough money has been reserved to complete the projects from which this is coming, and still allow this to go forward for other emergency projects. So I would now agree that it should go forward today.
Okay, so since we had previously announced we were going to continue it, but we will, in fact, open the roll on item 54, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
On item 11, which we had held on the desk, I think we're prepared to vote. The individual and building and safety simply have different versions of events. I'm prepared to move, as I had earlier, to reject the appeal and impose the assessment.
All right. Mr. Fewer's motion on item 11. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Is that the new roll or the old one? There we go. All right, that's approved. Next. Item 13 was continued.
Item 27.
Item 27. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I call this item special because it's dealing with the regional transportation plan that is being developed by SCAG, and how it is that this plan impacts the region as a whole. And quite frankly, members, two members who are very active at the SCAG level, it's Mr. Burson and myself. At one point, Mr. Ferraro was very active. On occasions, Ms. Biskowski has been part of that activity. Councilmember Galanter has been part of that activity. And I just want to continue to put an emphasis that more and more regional planning is going to be the issue that's going to be before us. And this regional transportation plan, what this report is requesting is that the city basically have some input as to some of those issues. And I want to give you one example that is extremely important, that we understand. Our Department of Transportation felt that we needed to put a greater emphasis and create higher numbers, because we felt that we would have higher economic development, higher job creation. But in doing that, they weren't necessarily taking into account the planning department's recommendation for our housing element. And if you have higher job creation, you should be constructing more housing. And so as a city, it was extremely important that housing and planning, or planning and DOT, make sure the numbers work, because that's going to be the numbers that are allotted to us. Another interesting issue is cargo transportation, and how cargo moves in and out of our region. Knowing the importance of the Alameda Corridor isn't necessarily dealing with the issue of transportation by truck. It does deal with transportation by rail. And so again, our input in that area is extremely important because of the activity of the harbor, and the increased activity of the harbor, in terms of it becoming a world-class harbor and the leader in that industry. The airport, and I want to bring the issue of the airport, because we currently have an EIR pending, and the council hasn't taken a position on the master plan. We basically are limited from basically voicing our opinion as a council until that process is completed. But you need to know that at the regional level, the debate was held, and it hasn't gone to the regional council, but it was held in the Regional Transportation Committee that dealt with the potential expansion of the airport. And there, clearly, the majority of the delegates of the committee, and I think the vote was 27 to 9, voted to limit the expansion of LAX to 78 million air passengers per year, as opposed to the proposed 86 of SCAG staff. But in doing that, they were basically saying that we have to give air travelers choices, and we need to expand some of the other airports in the region. And that was an important statement that happened at that level, and it'll be going before the regional council. And we have 15 votes on the regional council. Now, our hands have been tied because of the process, and it's our master plan that we're working on. But the rest of the region really hasn't known where the city of Los Angeles stands as its policymakers in regards to that issue. Do we want to see more expansion at other airports, or do we want to absorb all the expansion at our airport? And so these are very important issues. So what this committee report is requesting is basically for the city of Los Angeles to take positions on certain issues. One of those issues that we're not taking a position because of the EIR is on the airport expansion. But we are taking positions in the area of housing. We are taking positions in the area of our cargo transport. Some amendments were made on the committee, and I strongly recommend the amendments. I made most of them. But I am pointing it out to you, because it's this regional transportation plan that'll determine a lot of the funding sources, as well as set some standards for the Air Quality Management District, and how it is that as a region, we deal with the issues. And I had to share with my friends at SCAG, and I'll just end this, we were dealing with the question of expansion of Altoro, for example, and the people in that community want no expansion. And their perception, even though their income level says that they do a lot of air travel, they said that most of the people who come into LAX come in to do business in Los Angeles. And I said, well, I know that most of the international travelers who come to LAX are not coming to LAX to go to Pico Union. A lot of them want to go to Disneyland. And what we're finding out is that people that fly into Ontario are finding it more convenient to fly to Ontario if they want to go to Disneyland. And so, again, these regional issues are impacting us. And I just want everybody to be aware, because we're sending a very broad recommendation allowing our departments to participate, but the question of policymaking is in the hands of the council, and we need to make sure the department heads are working with us in that area.
Thank you. I would just like to say, members of the council, we really owe Mr. Hernandez a lot of gratitude for the work he did on this. He sits through, indeed, he sits through the most amazingly tedious SCAG meetings in order to make sure that our, well, that's most of the SCAG meetings, but in order to make sure that our interests are well-protected. And on this one, Mike, you really did yeoman's service, and my gratitude outweighs everybody else's here, because you had to sit through it and I didn't. But the regional council is coming. So item 27 is before us with the various amendments that Mr. Hernandez and others succeeded in putting through the Regional Transportation Committee. Open the roll on item 27. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Now, let me tell you, we are down to a bare quorum. You heard that that was 10 ayes. We have a special meeting. We have one more item on this meeting. And we do have a closed session with one or two items in it, Mr. Savornich. Fourth with on 27, my pleasure. So let's take item 39, which is the remaining item on this agenda, and then we will recess this meeting and have the special meeting. Item 39, Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members.
Wait, it's not on. Okay, go ahead.
Madam President, members. Neighborhood parks and neighborhood activity centers are key elements in solving the problem of gang violence. Ruth, for decades, I've been saying that family recreation areas, like those councilperson Padilla is recommending for the seventh, will take the city a long way towards involving Dad and Mom. As the Bible says, Proverbs, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and he'll never depart from it when he is old." If Mom and Dad become involved in the process of solving the gang problem, the solving of the gang problem will be a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Members of the council, item 39. Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Next item. We're now, that completes the regular meeting except for the closed session, so we're going to recess the regular meeting and the public comment. We're going to recess the regular meeting and call the roll for the special meeting. We're going to recess the regular meeting and call the roll for the special meeting.
Burnson, Cheick, Fear, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Biskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Swann, Chux, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. All right, what's before us here?
Item number one is item for which public hearing has been held. It's a Community and Economic Development Committee report.
All right, members of the council, item one on the special agenda. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Item number two is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It's communication from the Housing Department, and agency, our committee has waived.
All right, is there anybody who wants to be heard? Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item two? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Members of the council, open the roll on item two, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Item three is a closed session.
Item three is a closed session. However, I've been advised by the city attorney that can proceed in open session.
All right, in that case.
Madam Chair, that would be my motion.
That we do it in open session?
Open session.
Actually, I wasn't even going to ask. I was just going to do it because it'll save a lot of time here. All right, item three is before us. Sounds like we need a report.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I know that we're in a special council meeting at this time, but my understanding was item 61B was going to be continued to March 28th. Have we done that?
We have not done that yet. Let's get the, hang on, I mean, while we get. Item 61B, is that, are we continuing that?
Yes.
Okay, item 61B is now continued to March 28th.
61C. I'm sorry.
Okay, so item 61C is going to be continued to the next meeting, which is the 21st. And that should bring us back to the special meeting right where we were. Ms. Hines.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the council. I'm Jessica Hines with the LA City Attorney's Office, and with me is Brian Currie from O'Melvyn &amp; Myers. Brian is acting as our counsel in assisting us in the litigation involving the census. And we're here for a couple of things this morning. One, to give you a brief update on what has happened, and second, to let you know where we'd like to go and what our proposal's going to be. In accordance with your instructions, in December, to take all steps necessary to ensure that the city receives corrected census data, after the decision or the proposed order from Secretary Evans in February, where he took back the authority of the Census Bureau to make the final decision on correcting or not correcting the 2000 census, the city filed a lawsuit in Central District Court in LA seeking an injunction ordering that that rule be void and that the decision should be retained by the Director of the Census. This is pursuant to a longstanding effort on our part to make sure that this decision is made by statisticians and not politicians. Then last Thursday, the Census Bureau issued its recommendation. That recommendation was not to correct the census with data from what's called the ACE, which is the Second Survey. At that time, in order for us to evaluate the over several hundred pages of materials that were published at the same time as that recommendation, we took the motion on preliminary injunction off calendar. The lawsuit has not, however, been dismissed, and we have studied that information, and we've been getting advice from our statisticians. Yesterday, Secretary Evans issued a final announcement statement that he is not correcting the 2000 census and that he is not releasing the corrected data files. That has a number of implications for us, and we're going to discuss what options we have, but I want to make a couple of points. First of all, the city has pursued its Freedom of Information Act rights, and we have requested data from the Bureau, including the corrected data files, and to date, we haven't gotten those under that vehicle yet. The second thing is that the Census Bureau, their report does not say that the census or the ACE adjusted census was operationally defective in any way or that there were any particular problems with correction. In fact, they found that for most analyses, that the corrected census data was a better estimate of the population than the uncorrected census. However, they found a large discrepancy between this third set of data called demographic analysis, which came up with an estimate of total population that was significantly lower than either the census or the ACE corrected census. And using that, if you will excuse me, as I read herring, they declined to issue corrected census data or declined to recommend it. The analysis or the reasons behind the demographic analysis being so low is largely because undocumented immigration is not captured, and as a result, it stands to reason that that estimate would be low. And the Bureau has known this for at least the last decade and probably longer and just have not been able to update their administrative files in that regard. And what I'd like to do now is let Brian explain to you what it is we're going to be doing, and hopefully, we're going to be doing it very soon.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. In 1999, when we represented your interest before the U.S. Supreme Court on this issue, we took pains to ensure that the Supreme Court recognized that the Federal Census Act requires the use of statistical sampling to adjust census results in all instances other than apportionment of congressional representatives among the separate states. And in fact, in their decision in 1999, that's exactly what the Supreme Court recognized. We believe that the approach that the Census Bureau and Commerce Department have taken here is not in compliance with the federal statute. They have taken the approach that they will use unadjusted census data unless and until they are certain beyond any doubt that statistical sampling will increase the accuracy. We think that's exactly backwards, that Congress wants the Census Bureau to use adjusted data unless there is some problem demonstrated with it. So our plan would be to amend our complaint, to make a full frontal attack on the decision by the Secretary of Commerce, and to ask the judge to order that the decision be reversed and seek to have adjusted census data declared the official census data for use for redistricting, for allocation of federal funds, and for all other purposes.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I have to say, having had some opportunity to work with her for a long time, we are really lucky to have Ms. Hines working on this issue, who has, represents an enormous wealth of knowledge and continuity on this. Regarding these proposed strategy here, we took our motion for preliminary injunction off calendar. But doesn't the approach that you're prescribing now require us to have a different motion for preliminary injunction on calendar? Because there's an urgency here since it was, I think, aren't the states now directed to use the uncorrected data for the purpose of redistricting?
Yes, that would be.
So we have to move like this, right?
Exactly.
Are you going to file today?
We will file by the end of this week. The only thing we're waiting for actually is there are a number of other jurisdictions that have indicated an interest in joining with us, and we're waiting to get final approvals from them.
Do you anticipate opposition from members of Congress as parties to the litigation?
That's impossible to gauge.
I just, because one would presume that while there are states and cities which would benefit from using the corrected data, there are also locations which would suffer to the extent that we're talking about finite dollars, and if money moves to places like California, it moves from other places where the census is not reflecting growth in population, correct?
That's correct. And in the 1990 litigation, there actually were states that intervened, Wisconsin, for example.
Right.
In that situation.
All right. Are there any jurisdictions besides cities which have joined us or wish to join us?
We have several counties that are interested. LA County voted recently and Santa Clara County.
Why wouldn't the state join us? Have we sought their intervention in this?
We have had preliminary discussions with them, and they are sitting back and waiting has been the approach so far. We're hoping that this recent decision yesterday by Secretary Evans will change that.
Yeah, I mean, there may be, I raise some of these things because there may be political efforts that some of us may wish to engage in to ratchet up the visibility of this issue to our leaders in Sacramento. I would think that the Attorney General, as well as the governor, need to hear from us, as well as leaders of the state legislature. Because let's be clear, I mean, you know, this is always such a sterile discussion, uncorrected census data. As we know, what's really at stake is, will there be senior meals or not? Will there be political representation or not? Will one person, one vote mean something in Los Angeles or not? You know, will there be after-school programs? And to the extent, and this is the reason why the state needs to care, to the extent that money doesn't come from the federal government on an accurate basis to cities like Los Angeles to provide these services, we then have to turn either to scarce general fund dollars, which get exhausted quickly, or to the state to subsidize what otherwise the federal government would provide for basic human services, for basic representation. So is there anything that you want from us besides our imprimatur to have you actually pursue the preliminary injunction and the amended complaint? You need us to call, you know, Davis, Lockyer, Hertzberg, Burton, and those folks. What else do you need from us?
Well, I understand you're going to the League of National Cities, and they'll see very soon, and if this word could get out to those folks that this is a national issue and as well to the state. We haven't received, we've been speaking with the state senate and state assembly leaders, and they're very supportive, but they haven't come up to the table yet, but we have not heard back from the governor's office.
Mayor Reardon went to Washington yesterday. Is he carrying the message to leaders in Washington from a Republican standpoint as well as the mayor's standpoint that this is a critical issue to the people he represents?
As far as I know, the mayor has not taken an official position on support or not support of our present efforts.
Have we tried?
Yes.
Let me say, there is a motion pending that I brought in last week to support, that was before you were going to amend the complaint, but we can obviously amend the motion. And I was advised at the time that we couldn't act on it yet because you were in the middle of something. That's scheduled to come back on the 16th, which is our next meeting after today.
My time is basically about, could you please apprise all of us on a regular basis, daily if necessary, about additional actions? You know, I will move to do what you're recommending happen today, to amend the complaint and do the preliminary injunction, but please let us know because, you know, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars for Los Angeles City and about $2 billion, I think, for the county of Los Angeles that are at stake here, and people won't eat. People won't be adequately represented. People will be involved in gang violence who otherwise could have had something to do unless this changes.
Mr. Savornich.
I believe I was reading in the LA Times maybe a couple of days ago, an article in regards to this issue. And one of the things to which was mentioned in the issue was some type of an effort, and I don't know whether or not, based on what I've heard this morning, it's not our effort, to bifurcate the issue in regards to wanting to make a clear and present statement that the city of Los Angeles believes, and some other entities believe, that we are being short-changed in regards to a count that would affect the flow of federal dollars to our area. However, that the issue of redistricting as it pertains to boundary lines was a different issue, and that there was something that was mentioned that I believe that there is a broad consensus that if the statistics are being used in regards to making sure that we receive the federal funds that we should be receiving and that an undercount or the non-adjusted numbers do not provide for that, that is completely, that can be completely separated from the issue of how boundary lines are drawn. Can you just walk me through that a little bit here?
Right. It becomes a very complicated issue because most of the statutes that provide federal funding in their allocation formulas refer the appropriate departments to the official census data as determined by the Census Bureau, which means that right now, the official census data is the uncorrected census data. So without either amending the statutes or subsequent action which revises the definition of official census data, we're precluded from using another form, you know, another, the corrected data to allocate the funds. That's the first thing. The second thing is that in the 90s saga, there was a large effort to update the inter-sensual estimates that are used to allocate funds throughout the decade. And once the politicians became aware of exactly how much money was shifting, it didn't happen. So there was a proposal by Congressman Dan Miller, I believe, to separate the issue from redistricting and funding, but once the Census Bureau came out with its recommendation not to correct, my understanding is that that proposal is off the table now and that there is no intent to go forward with using the corrected data at this time for funding.
What are the estimates, if we have any estimates, that the city of Los Angeles has been undercounted?
There's not a current estimate for city, they have not released the data on local government or local jurisdiction undercounts. What we do have is estimates at the national level for various minority groups. The net national undercount is estimated at about 3.3 million people right now. Let's see here, Hispanics are estimated to having been undercounted between 2.2 and 3.4 percent, African Americans at 1.6 to 2.7 percent, and whites between .4 and .9 percent. And what this means is that the differential undercount, in other words, the fact that minorities are undercounted at a higher rate, remains present in this census. So for cities, jurisdictions like ours that have high minority populations, we will, of course, have a much higher undercount than the average of the country as a whole. So we do not have the specific demographic information on Los Angeles. They have refused to release it, and all we have are the national numbers.
Would it be safe to assume that the undercount in Los Angeles could be over 100,000 individuals?
Absolutely. In 1990, on a, you know, smaller population, it was 3.8 percent or 138,000, more than 138,000 people. And I would say that it's a good estimate that we're going to miss around 154,000 people in Los Angeles this time if our undercount is just the same as it was in 1990.
What was the number, 154,000? Perhaps one of my colleagues or even those at the table could describe to me, what would an undercount of 154,000 people translate into in regards to federal funds that Los Angeles would receive versus what we would not receive?
The current estimate is that we would lose in state and federal funding in the city of Los Angeles $37.5 million a year, which is carried forward over 10 years, so it would be over $375 million. And I would say that Pricewaterhouse has done an estimate of loss potential for counties for the next decade and estimated that LA County would lose $1.8 billion.
Finally, Madam President, there comes times in each and every one of our careers when you have to do what's right for your constituents in your city, and I plan to do that today.
Thank you. I assumed you always did that. I assumed you always did what was right. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, wouldn't it be nice for us to just say we have 15,000 less constituents in our districts or 10,000 less constituents in our districts? The reality is we can't. And the reality is, when you talk about that undercount, some districts will have a higher burden than other districts. And when we talk about the funding mechanisms, it's not like we have enough money to deal with all the issues that are impacting our city at this time, particularly when you're talking about, the money comes as a source of funding to the city, and then the city has to disseminate that funding. And so even when you talk about a program like Meals on Wheels for Seniors, it is impacted and the competition for those dollars where they can be spent. We just talked about adult daycare centers in the city of Los Angeles, and this kind of funding will impact them. It's part of the block grant process we go through every year, and we're finding more and more demands for our block grant that we can't satisfy. But it's also part of the reapportionment process. That's going to be a major item of discussion, I think, on this council and how it is that these districts are created and the fact that some districts will have a higher undercount than other districts. I just kind of say that because this is probably the most important thing we can be dealing with in terms of the future, immediate future of Los Angeles for the next 10 years. with in terms of the future, immediate future of Los Angeles for the next 10 years. And those of us who are going to the League of Cities meetings and are going to be meeting with a lot of federal officers, holders, need to have some talking points that would help us. I asked, when the presentation was being made at the committee level, this new legal strategy had not been disclosed at that time, and I asked for this item to be brought to the full council so that everybody could have a clear understanding of what's going on. A dramatic change, when you have the administrator of the census data, the staff people, the statisticians, basically in agreement not to do the count in a way that would be more accurate, and it put us in a different position legally. And so I think that it's important that some kind of talking points be provided to us through the CLA's office, those of us going back to Washington. When we're dealing with the League of Cities, the National League of Cities, and again, just to share with Mr. Fuhr the perspective, they also have an emphasis on the smaller cities. They also have an emphasis on the states, and it's like those smaller cities have a real strong interest in participating at those national levels so that they have a part of their policy statements be heard. And we are in the same league as the New Yorks and the Chigagos and the Miamis, and we have to form our coalitions. And to this date, you should know that the League of Cities has taken a position in support for an accurate count. However, it's been a difficult road to trudge. And so the more of us who are expressing that, particularly at the committee levels at the National League, the better off we are. And so if we could have some talking points, I'm planning to leave tomorrow. Many of my colleagues are leaving on Friday. I think that would be helpful.
Carmel Sella, Special Assistant City Attorney. We can work with the CLA's office to prepare talking points by the end of the day. The council may also wish to consider adopting a resolution calling on the Governor and the state legislature and the Attorney General to support the lawsuit.
We'll do it. Somebody has to write it down, but I'm sure you can do that in your sleep. The- I just wanted to say in response to one of Mr. Hernandez's comments, that after several years of my inquiring, Mr. Deaton finally explained to me that one of the very important reasons that the city of Los Angeles pays a lot of money to be a member of the National League of Cities is that it is important that we be there to look out for the interests of the big cities, who are few but have an awful lot of people in them. Mr. Holden.
I think that the points been made by Mr. Fuhr, of course, Mr. Hernandez, about the services that would be denied, benefits to the economy and the seat of Los Angeles. What wasn't stated is that by law, you still have to provide those services to the people if they were otherwise qualified. Then who would pay? Local taxpayers. That was not stated. Local government is required by law to provide those essential services to the individuals who are in need. That's the law. And so if the federal government is saying they are not going to be counted, we and local government cannot make the assumption that they're not here. They are here. They are present, and they should be counted. I support the lawsuit, and I would encourage, if the motion has not already been made, and if it has, then I support the motion. The Governor should stand tall on this one. He should not run and hide. The legislature should do the same. For the life of me, I can't see why they have not adopted a joint resolution memorializing Congress and the President to comply with the re-account. Why haven't they done that? They're in session, two session, regular session and a special session. Was the motion to require them to do that?
The motion was that we urge them to join in the lawsuit-
Well, then we memorialized the- we asked the legislature to memorialize the Congress and the President.
Basically, yeah.
That's the motion. Do it- we can do it so they understand what their process is up there. The President and the Congress to count those individuals who are present but have not been counted, for the obvious reason, the benefits. And I so moved, that's the way it's going to be presented.
Yeah, you're actually the second. Mr. Fuhr already moved it, but you will certainly be the second.
Did you use the same language?
Pretty close.
Well, just use that language, Madam President.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
We are going to vote on Mr. Holden-Fuhr's motion. Open the roll, or Fuhr-Holden's motion, if you prefer to vote on it that way. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that's approved forthwith on that, and thank you for the report. And with respect to the talking points, I'm also leaving tomorrow, but we're all going to be reachable by phones and faxes, and so whatever you can get us would be helpful. Okay, that brings us to the end of that item. We need forthwith on item one from the special- well, you know, it ain't my fault. Forthwith on special meeting item one. We have, I think, just public comment and two of the four closed sessions, is that correct?
There's not going to be any closed sessions.
Well, we won't have any of them if Mr. Wax leaves.
Unless it's a truly urgent.
Check with the city attorney while I call for public comment.
She says you could put it over.
What?
Next one.
We're not- the council is not- Cecil, the council doesn't meet again until a week from Friday.
What?
The 16th. So if you need us to do something before then, then we need to do it today.
I'm concerned about you.
All right, you think about that while I have public comment, which will move us along here. All right, I have two people who wish to be heard. First, Mr. Richard Robinson.
Madam President, Members, Richard Robinson, owner of Black Hole Screen Productions. I was a member of the United Auto Workers, UAW. That union raised the standard of living of millions, providing an increase in the living wage for General Motors, Ford, Chrysler, and American Motors employees. The prevailing wage had been far below that necessary compared with the- far below that needed compared with the huge salaries of management. The American Federation of Labor, Congress of International Organizations, the AFAL-CIO, changed America, particularly during the '50s in and around Detroit. Your support of the labor movement currently swamping Hollywood, it's a Titanic issue, will be increasingly important as the compelling issue of parity becomes a process that some will use to destroy the developing relationship between labor and management in Hollywood as America becomes wealthy and the rich, thank God, get richer. Ruth, the Writers Guild of America, that 1,100 membership union is seeking parity. Your support of their govern- excuse me. Your support of their movement, their governing bodies' movement will set the tone here at City Hall, sending a message to those disproportionately benefiting from the billions of dollars generated by the movie industry writers. To make a long story short, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Addie Mae Miller.
Good afternoon, Madam President, full term. I'm Addie Mae Miller, and today is Wednesday, March 7th, year 2001. At today, approximately 9:15, I called area code 213-202-5866. And that number belongs to our- the Inspector General of the Los Angeles Police Department, Mr. Jeffrey English, who is the Inspector General of Los Angeles, to request an underlying a copy of the underlying research and all supporting documents, and a copy of the report concerning the allegations against our police chief, Bernard C. Parks. I found it necessary to come talk to you, also deliver a hand copy to the mayor, and as we speak, this has been faxe-emailed to 106 media throughout the state of California in the United States. It says, "Los Angeles Captain Miller asks mayor to suspend Inspector General staff pending a full investigation." Los Angeles, California, I, Addie Mae Miller, candidate for mayor for the city of Los Angeles, has indicated that the mayor and city council should suspend the staff of the Police Commission Inspector General and the Inspector General. I indicate that I am concerned of the press leaks of official reports to the news media. The staff of the Inspector General lacks professionalism that the public expects. Recent press leaks have been showing a lack of respect to the public. I'd like to also say that I believe this is a witch hunt on those of you who have also did Willie Williams like this. I don't know of anything about Darryl Gates and the former police chief that did like this. Now you're on Police Chief Parks. This shouldn't be. And I'd like to also say that the police that's in the Los Angeles Police Department, when the head is under investigation and under stress from his bosses, which are you, they have the tendency to act up and undue harass. And I want to tell the public that any police officers that undue harass you, get their name, their number, and report them. And you don't have anybody to report to them now because Police Chief is still chief of this police of this city, and he does not like harassment of any citizen in this city. I have one more- may I please say, just one more thing, please?
Go right ahead.
Okay, oh, you're so sweet. I just love you, Ms. Kalan. You're just so sweet.
But you have to get to the point.
Oh, okay. Mr. Green brought me an article that was published in the L.A. Times in regards to, he said, "Addie, your name, you're a candidate for mayor." I said, "Yes, I am." He says, "Well, this article says that the candidates don't have a chance, and they didn't mention your name." I said, "That's good, because I have a chance to be the next mayor. I'm not- I don't belong in that article." Thank you so much.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period.
And a big hug, Madam President.
Yeah, thanks. Lunch would do nicely, thank you. We have, I'm told we can continue one more of our closed session items.
Card for public comment.
I don't have a card from you, but-
I gave it to the officer.
Go right ahead. Melrose Larry Green, but Larry, could you-
I'll make it brief. I'll make it brief.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Melrose Larry Green. We all know that. Good afternoon, everybody. By the way, we're up against a Laker game tonight on the replay, so I think there won't be many people watching the replay. It's against Toronto, so it should be a slam dunk. I am furious. I am furious at the L.A. Times, and I want to echo the comments of Addie Mae Miller, who I might add is a very formidable candidate, has two legs she brings to the table that put her as a minority. She's a woman. She's not the only woman candidate. Catherine Connell's not the only woman candidate, and she's an African-American. You wouldn't notice that there's any African-American candidates for mayor through the L.A. Times. Well, they have a story in today's L.A. Times, "Those Who Don't Stand a Chance." Freaks! Well, I'm not mentioned in this story, but I am mentioned in a story where they call me a fanatic who interjected chaos and absurdity into the mayor's race. If I didn't have a million dollars already, I would sue these schmucks for libel. This is what I think of the L.A. Times. I'm now ripping it up, okay? This is what I think of the L.A.
Just make sure you recycle it.
I will recycle it. I want to tell you something, folks. Nobody ever- they didn't use my name in these phony polls. When some leading candidate's got 24 percent on March 6th, that's not a mandate. 23 percent of the voters haven't made up their- or they don't know who to vote for. Well, they didn't ask if they want to vote for Green, or Addie Mae Miller, or Joe Shea. And if you go to a restaurant and you want shrimp scampi, and on the menu all they have is hamburger, lobster, and shrimp frate d'avolo, you're not going to get shrimp scampi. And let me say something. I saw Joel Wax's commercial last night. I was sleeping when I watched the KZLA news, but I woke up like my dog when I saw your commercials. Very good, very good. But let me say this, I don't care what they say, we're going to wrap it up. I heard you all morning, now you'll hear me. This is my time.
Not anymore, it just expired.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What do you get, wait a minute, two minutes?
10 minutes for all the public comment.
Oh, I see.
And I didn't know you wanted to be on until after this hour.
Let me rip up the L.A. Times a little bit more, all right?
Okay.
I can't even use it for toilet paper, it's so small.
We have a recycle bin back here. The sergeant will be happy to help you.
You know, a lot of you, look, they tried to ruin Nate Holden in the L.A. Times. A lot of you have been ruined by the L.A. Times. They had their- oh, you want it? Here you go. There you go.
Come on, Larry.
I don't need that negative coverage. See you later. Have a good- what, are you on vacation next week? You're going to-
No, we're going to the National League of Cities and try to get the census count done properly.
Okay, all right. I'll be tomorrow with Matt Drudge and Joan Rivers over at the Marriott Marina Del Rey. Thank you very much.
That closes the public comment period.
I'll say hi to Matt and Joan.
We are now going into executive session, which means that those of you who are not involved in the executive session, even if your candidate's for mayor, have to leave the chamber.
Joel gets to stay, yes.
And while we're clearing the room, let us also clear the desk. What have we got?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, the motions are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Walters requests to be excused. City business Tuesday, March 20th, to leave at 11:45. A motion is required.
All right, Mr. Savornich moves. Mr. Wax seconds. Unanimous vote.
And also, uh-
With any luck, the meeting will have started before then.
The closed session item 61A is going to be continued to March 16th.
All right, and that leaves us, I believe, with 61D, but we're not quite clear yet. I'm doing my best, Joel, I really am. Before we do anything further, let me announce that items that would have kicked over were noticed for the meeting dates when the council would ordinarily be meeting but will not be because of the National League of Cities meeting will be held on Friday, March 16th. So if you have a notice for a hearing for the 13th or 14th, the 9th, the 13th, or the 14th, sit tight, it'll be on the 16th. It's about on par with our meeting starting times. All right, we have one item before us. Madam Clerk?
Item 61D, settlement in the case of Newman versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $1,350,000.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right, that's approved. Forthwith on that, please. Hang on one second. What else have we got? Do we have any adjourning motions? We do not have any adjourning motions, in which case we're adjourned.
Now I can look at you. Are we having a picture?